...of the left big ball who was allegedly killed by train accident and lives to move with lovely wife and children. One, Fastu Chery, Police Commander from Bonkante.
Good afternoon.
Two, Councilor Jonathan Plomo, County Attorney. Three, Mr. John Kelly's jersey plomo. Four, Madam Esther Emwok, former Supreme General from Bonkante. If I raise your hand today, this speaker and the distinguished police. It was, it was brought to my attention that the body of the deceased was removed from the crime scene in Bonkante after lima, lima tear. And taken to the Canada funeral home in Banga, Bonkante without the permission of the farmers. This individual was then apprehended by the police but was later released by them for reasons that were not stated. This case has stirred major controversies that have the propensity to stain the peace and unity of our beloved county if it is not handled properly. With that said, Mr. Speaker and colleagues, I am calling the police to have certain individual arrested along with their, along with their corporates in order for justice to prevail. Please accept the renewed assurance of man hires esteem as I look forward to your timely intervention. Sincerely, Honorable Jay Marvin Cole, Chairman of Rules, Order and Administration. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen. That is the summary of communication from Honorable Jay Marvin Cole. Thank you very much.
With the reading of the communication from Honorable Cole, what is your will and pleasure? Honorable Colley. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished police. Having listened to the communication raised by the well learned, senior police from this case between Bonkante and home. If I should be separate that they, those involved which were named by the chief clerk. Be brought to this house for questioning along with the, and it should be accompanied by the, the current Minister of Internal Affairs. If I should refer, I think I said. Please refer to that motion to, to, this as a security measure that they have every day. The council of police, the police people, they, they, they are G company. Okay, thank you. So, so, thank you. So the Minister of Justice should come along then. Uh, and allow the IG so that they can ask a question to that. Thank you. Hey, I mean, move a second there. Are you ready to vote? Already, Honorable Cole.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, fellow police. I think this issue should be said to a leadership of brands that, that state is already thought. And a open, open position, so that my country have been handled, they call decisions, they say thought on this figure. And I think my share of leadership will handle it, is that I'm hoping that the score will set up a period, decision for like that.
Uh, senior brother, ask what we get. Already, Honorable Cole.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, police. Who is threatening of my awareness, my name rejected, but it's a court to go stand on the bill on the record. Uh, to the movie. That was also one of the bill on the record. Mister Moon, I will be ready to vote. If you accept that because the superintendent or the former superintendent of the county is one of the party to be invited. And the former superintendent immediately box is the Minister of Internal Affairs. And not the library national police in terms of reporting land. I will move that the Minister of Internal Affairs and the current or past come along do their appearance.
Thank you. Thank you. What is that? Your name rejected or I think I will accept. Already, Honorable, please make sense.
I will be ready to vote to the movie. Um, being the former chair of the caucus and also a pastor of the caucus. Now this matter is very sensitive and we need to have duties. So if these people can appear in, in leadership, I will be ready to vote.
You know she's my big aunt, so, uh, I just have a reject. Honorable Speaker, already, yes.
Are you ready to vote, the speaker? If you can use your professional legal, uh, status to tell us that if something is in code, then I give it. Can it be discussed in a manner from discussing. So give your professional legal advice on the matter based on that, are you ready to vote, the speaker?
Uh, thank you. Let me say that the matter is not in code, so I respect totally reject. Are you, are you ready to vote? Uh, I, I don't want, I don't want, I, 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 I don't want to, I don't want to blur the lines. As in, in, in the, in the words of my colleague, Clarence Gav, reminded me last night, this is a political house. Uh, while I could give you a legal opinion, I would be the lawyer of the house or the legal advisor to any structure here. So if you want that, I will ask Honorable Thomas to address that as Jay Anthony Chery. Although, although, although no matter before the court prevents us from having, uh, oversight not only legal issues. Or on the factual issues complained of, but as a matter of courtesy to the court. We generally do not discuss issues that are before the court. And, uh, so that we do not blur the lines of the court equal branch of government. Uh, we usually defer those matters and leave them to the court. Uh, that would be my opinion as a lawyer, but for the official opinion, I would defer to Anthony Michael Thomas.
The first thing I want to advise is that. So the first thing in the court, it is clear that it is considered as being sub to DC. That they cannot be discussed anywhere outside of the court. But the assumption to hear is that with our legal oversight method as the first branch of government. We can discuss the factual and circumstantial nature of the issue, but not the substantive issue as being discussed in the court. And also if it is not in court, there is no need, nothing by heart of discussing to help issue. Thank you. I want our honest to. So if it's important, if it's important, if it is not in court, nothing stops us. From exercising our oversight to discuss the issue. But if it is in court, the substantive nature of that issue cannot be discussed after the court. And we can discuss the facts and we can discuss the circumstances surrounding the issue. But not the law issue as being discussed in the court. Thank you.
The party of the day is okay. The party of the day is are not entitled to two forum. The appropriate forum is the court. Once the court takes jurisdiction, we back off generally as a matter of courtesy. So if this matter is in court, we are not going to entertain it. However, the proponent I'm hearing saying is not in court. When they appear, no, 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 no. Sorry, sorry, my call. When they appear, if they testify on the first inquiry that is in court, we will dismiss them. Yeah, so let it show the family, let the family show that it is in court. If it is in court, we will discuss it. Your family is not chair of the. I, I respect family's opinion and we will entertain it. He's not in chair, he chairs of the. Where are we? Are you ready to vote? Are you ready to vote? All those people say aye, opposed no, and most of the others next.
Communication from Honorable Swoe, Lee Moma. Dear myself, I stand my compliments. About the indulgence of plan area to kindly invite the environmental protection agency EBA. And Ministry of Public Works to appear to go plan area on Thursday 6 June 14th. To provide reasons for allowing several construction works in all the alleys or waterways without any proper drainage system. As a result, this has led to severe flooding communities across district number three, Moserado County. Especially the Omega Ophi community does many people who has been hit, drowned. What is more interesting is that the people claim that they have legitimate rights to build in those areas with the full knowledge of the EBA and public works. Thanks for your usual cooperation. Sincerely, Honorable Swoe, Colley Moma. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen. That is the review of a communication from Honorable Swoe, Colley Moma. Thank you.
Honorable Cole, Honorable Marvin Cole, your communication will be read. I will pay close attention. Honorable Colley, Honorable Cole, Honorable Colley, when you are making your motion, everybody pay attention to you. Please do this. Uh, with the reading of the communication from Honorable Swoe Moma, what is your will and pleasure, Honorable Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The issue, the issue of. Well, the water is last time had become an urgent challenge, especially in the city of Queens. Given last night, we were heavily attacked to the extent that even one of our police. Uh, was being affected by that heavy force. So I would want to move, Mr. Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, and fellow police. That the proponent of this communication be given at least two minutes, two to five minutes of presentation on the issue. And then, and then. Honorable Speaker, I just say I move that the letter be open for the special and the proponent be given at least five minutes of presentation for the issue. Thank you.
Uh, I need a second. Yes, we move a second there that the communication be open. Are you ready to vote? All those who say was say aye, I heard only three ayes. All those who say was say aye, opposed no. Honorable Moma, you have. Honorable, Honorable, Honorable Moma, you have, uh, three minutes.
Uh, Honorable Speaker, the deputy speaker distinguished police. Uh, I think this is the young, uh, the pros and cons of the matter. I think it's very serious. It's something urgent to mind this street. And I think I is extended to all the district, like District 4 and District 2 as it relates to the disaster. Uh, I remember Joe Forrest, when I was home to see the district that night. When I went in, we noticed, uh, two kid that got drunk going in the issue of the floor. And it was very pretending, uh, to see little kid out of the neck. So this is just like one hour rain. So what would be our imagination when we look at five hours or seven days rain? So there will be a very huge disaster. So what we thought was, was to do an intervention. And we did that intervention by talking to various community leader from our District 4 and District number 3. We were told that, uh, the issue of the floor is about the, uh, negligence of government officials. Uh, like the public work, the EPA and other people who have used to listen to the crowd of the people. Uh, there are roads that was constructed by CCO, the major road. And when they did the road, they put in drainages. But people have come into build stores, even the building of the market, Omega Market, they have closed all of those drainages. Allowing the water to flow in the rural community of Omega Ophi. So I'm, uh, appealing to the house to at least invite the head of public work. EPA and that of the disaster team so that we can mitigate this issue quickly before it escalate into something different. Thank you colleagues and God bless him.
Honorable Speaker.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, fellow colleague. Let me extend my thanks and my appreciation to man, on that's the neighbor, Honorable Swoe Moma. For forering that communication on the floor. Like he already said, fraud has become a serious, serious problem in all of, all of us in the pink bed belt. I want to believe the reason is simple to go. The EPA is allowing people to build in swamp. The Ministry of Public Works is allowing people to build in alley and on villages as it stated. So I just want to join him and we invite them to give a reason why they are solitary institution. By government will allow this thing to happen when the taxpayer are paying their tuition at this stage and that. I want to say to Honorable Moma, thank you for forering that communication and allow for the, the institution mean by him to come and pay me for us. Thank you.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished police. Let me take your time first of all to recommend and distinguish, uh, colleague. Uh, spoken by for this communication. It's issue relating to flooding in Liberia. It is a serious issue that brought us, uh, an emerging reality. One, is the fact that planet change has become one of the key issues in the world. That nations like ours, this other country like ours need to take serious and understand. As a result of planet change, where the intergovernmental, uh, part of our planet, our planet change reward. In a six and seven, uh, eventment. Clearly indicate that planet change is going to cause erratic weather pattern. Such that at some point in time, there will be heavy rainfall. And that nations and government must take this issue serious as to policy as well as resources that will be available. Our public works and other institutions should be able to change that model of business as usual model to incorporate. And be able to provide a lasting solution. Remember that in Monrovia and this environment at some point in time in some areas are below sea level. And so groundwater versus the surface water, uh, precipitation level in our country. Will continue to trickle and cause home damage to the city. In fact, we have reports, that the report that show that if the issue of erosion or flooding in the city is not taking. Uh, paying attention and do not address the, the, the various strategic and serious manner. We could wake up in the morning or on the day to find ourselves on a water. Because in West Point, the sea level right now is somewhere around one meter. If that level ever rose to one point three meter, you're gonna have the entire bad town and, uh, uh, the island on a water. Therefore, I think we should invite the citizens to the rest of the city to assist that to be. Your sister gave you, uh, 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 the, the, I see. I, I agree this for we fly these, these turbulence is a lot. Is that no wrong?
When you fly these, these turbulence, true, when it's they on the island change, yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Ah, yeah. Wait on. Wait on, Honorable Noah. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, Honorable. I've been listening. I've been asking for the reading.
I've been asking for the question. Never had that, put it from. I'm going if I can think of second. That the two leaders, two institutional heads involved. Ministry of Public Works and the Executive Director for EPA. And PM, in full this party.
They have been moving second there that the. Ministry of Public Works and the General Director of the EPA be invited to appear on Thursday. Um, are you ready to vote? In, in the, asking you inform us, the right. Um, are we ready to vote? Already. Already, already, Honorable Coca.
I think. To make things faster, to get detail from the communication, I will be very composed. And the committee responsible, said, uh, committee of public works. Can be directed to invite those two institutions and, and then they should set a schedule. To go on the fee, allow the committee to protect the case, all areas that creating problems. At the various community and reflect in the plan area of the two weeks.
Are you ready to vote? All those who say was say aye, opposed no, the chief clerk votes do as direct about plan area next.
Communication from Honorable Anthony F. Williams. Honorable Jay Frenati Kova, Speaker 55 National Assembly Chair, House of Representatives Captain of the Land Moruga, Abiria. Dear Honorable Speaker and distinguished police. I bring you greetings from the peace loving of Pliwosolakan District, Nblan County. And wish to bring to the attention of these speakers by the continuous challenges. Our people are facing in rural Liberia obtaining basic services such as birth certificate. Driver's licenses, passports, marriage certificates, business registration from the Liberia Business Registry. Lend deeds and payment of revenue into governor or Liberia accounts as result of the various county service center. I'm not being functional in addressing the perpetual challenges of our people. Honorable Speaker and esteemed police, it would interest you to note that the rationale behind the establishment of county service centers. In Liberia was multi-faceted and aim to address telephone. And aim to address whatever challenges related to governance, decentralization and service accessibility as reasons behind the centers. For which, which amongst parties has taken hearing. One, decentralization and local governance. Let, Liberia has historically faced challenges due to a centralized governance system. Which means no popular participation and local government. Rural residents always struggle to access essential government services. The national policy on decentralization and local governance launched in 2012. And subsequent enactment of the local government act in 2018 in to address this issue. These policies sought to take governance closer to the people in rural areas. Promote citizens' participation and ensure equitable resource distribution. Two, non-stop shop approach. The service center is intended to serve as a non-stop shop where major documentation services are accessible to rural residents. Instead of navigating multiple offices, citizens can access various services in a single location closer to them. Three, prosperous and social cohesion. Desperate challenges, the service centers for prosperity, for improved governance. And this similar decentralization in Liberia and add as platforms for social cohesion between citizens and the government. Additionally, the center contributes to. Dom- domestic or a domestic resource mobilization by generating revenue. When citizens, when citizens can access services immediately, it must have trust and engagement with the government. Honorable Speaker and distinguished police, the county service centers. It is crucially last in promoting decentralization, improving service accessibility and fostering social cohesion. These centers play a crucial role in bringing governance closer to the people and ensuring equitable development across Liberia. Honorable Speaker and illustrious police are right, providing the honorable indulgence of plan area. As some of our, some of my police, especially those represented hard to reach counties. Let myself will agree with you to invite the following government entities. Ministry of External Affairs, Liberale Revenue Authority, Ministry of Transport, Ministry of Health. Department of Vata Statistic responsible for birth certificate and other relevant authorities. That may need and therefore later to provide the own standards of the various county service centers. Regarding how functional, effective and efficient they are in providing the needed services for our people. Will renew assurances to push the agenda of our people as a method. Honorable Anthony F. Williams, Representative, let's add this one number two. Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen. That is the review of a communication from Honorable Anthony F. Williams.
Honorable Thomas. Mr. Mizali, Co-Mizali, Distinguished colleague. I've been listening to your engagement. Anthony Williams. I'm push, I got me the stuff. I will gather the proper number to use three days to deliver it, and then, and motion set force. Would I say, are you ready to vote? All those who feel happy, yeah, I guess. I will come to the forums.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Co-Presiding, Ruro Kuya, Distinguished colleague. Uh, our being here today, uh, in this teaching upon our people, I trust the confidence being placed into us, I during time of the elections, that we're going to make sure that to protect their interests and make sure the business social services be moved from open area to rural area. Now, since eighteen twenty-two, that was established in August eleven, eighteen forty-seven, offered away, a simple travel license, after which Liberia County. People from Liberia County are involved into driving activities, MOPC, CRC, rolling period, travel license cost around fifty thousand to forty thousand US. There's so many from Liberia County who pay almost about nineteen thousand to ten, nineteen thousand of over, excluding their upkeep. Mr. Speaker, Co-Presiding, Distinguished colleague, I think, the 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 behavior or attitude of central government, we need to look at it because we as a people next to it, we need to make sure that these business services give our people to stay, that is the reason why we stand in social contract with our people, that's one. The local business registry, for example, if you get involved into a business, for example, in Plebo, in Waikiki, where this people come from, or Sarsa, you get involved with business, first thing, the LBS will ask about, will ask about the business registration. Now, to come to Moruga, you spend, they see around eighteen thousand dollars to come to you, just to get a business registration documents from the LBS in up, uh, business street, uh, yeah, up business street. If you come to Mosorab County to, to obtain a single business registration document, because there are only two, two most going after a single business registration documents. So, why are we here? Why are our people sent us here to make sure, to provide the environment for them to be able to access the opportunities, and then we are here, the national government or the secretary, continuously, continuously deny our people these services on, on the argument of low monetary allocation. Since eighteen forty-seven, we don't have a budget, a single travel certificate, every time we pass budget, every time we pass the auto-tel history, one minister alone, if you see his or her budget, you get full. Why our people who are doing the business work, or who are investing on the daily business, they get up the job that she, they can get. For example, white certificate, white certificate is around five hundred dollars a week, or ten dollars a week. Some others from where Liberia County will pay over nineteen thousand dollars, or even from local, Mr. Speaker, you're who, will you be happy when your two million from Ogobah so far walking to come and pay nineteen thousand dollars? And so, this is not happening. So, we who are here as a representative, we need to make sure that we call these four ministers or the agencies that are responsible for this business social documents our police, to grow their activity, so that they can move it to our people in the counties and districts, so that we who as, and as representatives, or representatives, we take part of the bread on our head, as we speak, I come from nine persons at fourteen, to get to our, uh, the drivers. So, the nine persons that come from our Liberia, we're a good sign though, one of that nineteen thousand thousand nine, they'll come and to move back, plus they're full in the lodging. So, we need to make sure that our people are in a, that are in a group from this, make sure that we take the services to them, so that they will be given access then, in as soon as possible time. On the minister, uh, 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 white woman, uh, 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 internet affair, is it what in body today, we go for women, I service them, all the this time, the service centers are not working, Mr. Speaker. So, we need to make sure that we call these four ministers to tell us about the decentralization process, so that our program will have access to this, so that we are, you know, it will be what we do.
Three, five, we will have a table. That's our question. We are receiving opinion of the Supreme Court. If not, then we reflect the motion. Mr. Chief Clerk, Chief Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Please, I mean.
The motion, they not stated date.
Can we amend the motion, stop the date? Eh, won't we? No, it's not, wasn't still there. On that side, distinguished colleagues, are you ready to vote? I will go, I'm ready.
Mr. Mizali, you are here already under the, I guess. Mr. Mizali, Co-Mizali, to the movement, our president would vote in the same decision for them. Now, the honourable House of Lords, you delay the process, to the movement, that will firstly check the budget allowance of the Ministry of Internal Affairs, as a member of the House, or whosoever entity responsible, that will be funded. You see, whatever preparation have made in the past, and those things have been effectuated.
Sir, honourable members.
Of course, the conversation.
You ready that? The movement we chaptered, okay. On that side, distinguished colleagues, are you ready to vote? All those who say here?
Yeah.
Motion for a next.
Communication from Honorable Eugene J. M. Collins. Honorable Councilor J. F. Nanticofer, Speaker of House of Representatives, Fifty-Fifth National legislature cabinet of Moruga, Republic of Liberia, reference, request the appearance of the Minister of Public Works before plan area. Dear Honorable Speaker, I present compliments, Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues, and request the Honorable Speaker, J. F. Nanticofer, and these speakers, by formally invite the Minister of Public Works of the Republic of Liberia, Honorable Roland Lafayette Ginnings, to appear before this Honorable House of Representatives to address concerns about the US twenty-two point four million dollars' road contracts awarded by the Ministry of Public Works to some construction companies, including Chipo, Sebo, and other institutions, without the approval of the legislature. It has come to my attention that the Ministry of Public Works awarded these contracts without CD approval from the legislature, as required by the public financial management, PFM, and the public procurement and concession, concession commission laws of the Republic of Liberia, which take among other requirements that only should be available before their warrant of contracts by any government institution. I'm deeply concerned about the minister not following due diligence in the award of such a significant amount of public funds. Hence, any violation of such process must be thoroughly investigated. Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues, allow forward to the prompt appearance of the Ministry of Public Works to adequately address these national concerns in as soon as possible time. With sentiments of my highest esteem, sincerely yours, Honorable Eugene J. M. Collins, Representative Electoral District Number Four, Bong County. Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, Distinguished Honourable Ladies and Gentlemen, that is a reading of a communication from Honorable Eugene J. M. Collins.
Distinguished colleagues, you listen to the reading of the communication from our colleague of Electoral District Number Four, Honorable Eugene Collins, requesting the appearance of the Minister of Falas, to speak to the issue of, sorry, Public Works, to speak to the issue of our contract warrant in a, along with two years. On that side, are you ready to vote? Sorry, I will, yes, go, sorry. That's a good impression. Thank you, Mr. Mizali, Co-Presiding, Telepolice. I've been listening to the reading of the letters from our colleague from Bong County, and given that, uh, there were letter per form, and one of our colleagues from Mosorab also, that imparted the Ministry of Public Works, and the EPA executive director, uh, so that our being here, our effort of sending for people will not be in front of the day, or it will not be local, uh, very situated hour, I will bear your indulgence. If we can agree that we combine the two letters on a same day, uh, so that we can listen to the Ministry of, no issues, no old issues, uh, but before doing that, we also had the Presiding, to give our colleague five minutes, while you can read it to the year of the week, so that we can also listen to it, thank you so much, I can get a second. Would you contest the session, uh, Honorable Eugene Collins, you have two minutes.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Speaker, Co-Presiding, Distinguished colleagues, you listen to the communication, it's clear that the Minister of Public Works is in total violation, under section sixteen of the, uh, the IDI, like establish the Public Work. So, um, it is clear that this man appeared to tell us, or speak to the Liberians people, why did he violate the constitution of Liberia and that of the IDI established, this institution by using public phone without the import of the legislature, thank you.
Thank you, and listen, probably, uh, he's done, we reflect to the motion. Honorable Chief Clerk, please act in accordance.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, next.
Communication from Honorable Regent Nawe Koo. Honorable Councilor J. F. Nanticofer, Speaker of the Fifth National legislature, Honorable House of Representatives Cabinet of the Bay of Capitole, Moruga, Liberia. Dear Mr. Speaker. Honorable Speaker, Deputy Speaker and Federal Police.
Oh, oh, I can see.
My concern has been raised to the issues surrounding the workings and remuneration of the county council members as per the Local Government Act of twenty eighteen. There is no established honorarium for county council members as per our local government act. Honorable Speaker and Deputy Speaker and Federal Police, any honorarium as a benefit indicates a greater sense of prestige for every employee. Honorarium is a major motivating factor that results in higher employee satisfaction with maximum efficient and effective output. Paying honorarium fosters a better sense of result, teamwork, resulting in improved trust and better performance. Chapter two point nine of the Local Government Act speaks so the remuneration. County council members shall be paid an honorarium from the county budget. The legislature shall set a ceiling for such honorarium every four years. Honorable Speaker, Deputy Speaker, Distinguished colleagues, based on chapter two point nine of the Local Government Act, there is time that the various county councils need, in as soon as possible time, to establish a remuneration ceiling for county council members, or else the county council, which comprise of non-member, to each council will be working on a pro bono basis, like the case of Borne and Agumic Counties respectively. Count Regas, Honorable Regent Nawe Koo, Representative Electoral District Number Eleven, Mosorab County, Honorable Presiding Officer, Co-Presiding Officer, Distinguished Honourable Ladies and Gentlemen, that is a reading of a communication from Honorable Regent Nawe Koo, District Number Eleven, Representative, thank you, sir.
Honorable Deputy Speaker, Co-Mizali, Distinguished colleagues. This is a very important communication from our Guayen, Guayen, man said his second term in this House of Representatives, Honorable Regent Nawe Koo, District Number Eleven, Mosorab County. The issue of, uh, the county council members, the fumings, the allotment, the superintendents in Liberia, this have begun, has started becoming, God for themselves, ushering some responsibilities to county consent, or the act of, uh, the, the legislature, or the caucus of each of the counties. I'm glad that our eleven colleague was able to notice this and flag it. So, with the importance attached to this communication, with the importance attached and the ways our ones have expected over the past time, if I can obtain a second, that our one, cool, we give a time to expensier this issue, and after which, which, uh, they fight those, uh, institutions concerned, to give us reason why, they, which, well, they have been perceived by, on the balance of communication.
My honourable colleagues, this, the, once a proper of the communication, it will be that it should be discussed, and therefore the program I provide decide whether the issue to be resolved here or to be sent to a committee room. You cannot say, the man reiterate many, then you go to committee room. So, give us one motion. The level of program I could decide, after deliberation, when I follow colleagues, that issue.
But, excuse me, information, I'm sure, I'm sure the, the, the Guayen is not paying attention because it does.
The motion, the motion, what's the motion?
The motion is that the proper that we give up, of what we are to explain, after which the plan area should decide to invite the people concerned, and it's a committee room.
The procedure is, opening the communication for discussion, after deliberation, a motion should be entered in to reject a sample, if I, so we allow the proper, the communication.
Opening the communication for discussion after which, uh, the.
Okay, I think it's there. The com- the communication should be opened for discussion, on that side, are you ready to vote? All those who say here, again, operational, two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Speaker, Co-Presiding, Telepolice. The issue of place start of the Local Government Act, unlike before the passage of the Local Government Act only, it has a piece, the piece of management of county forms, it has a separate salary there, and each gets a memo of team from the government. Since the Local Government Act was passed, only the team, it is not clear as to quality of the movement set for county council, and each county should have at least one member on the council. So, the purpose of the order for plan area to invite or to authorize each of the caucus chair to be the various superintendent in a joint section, where they can establish the ceiling of our county members. If you look at Bong County today, they are, they are starting different, with the issue of the Local Government Act, of all of those from the council, I never give up stopping, and those fixed amount, they want to them, simply having to give it. But for most of our county, so that we, we have quite a valid purpose, we tell them, we have a goal to give them everything so far, so a company, they want to plan area to allow, talk us into me, and only various superintendent, establish a schedule for county council members. And, and beginning, we have all of the talks.
Information of your.
Honorable Presiding, Presiding, Distinguished colleagues, uh, to my fully, uh, the proper of the communication, the Local Government Act is clear.
Honorable Regent, please.
Like I started saying, the, the local government act is, is very strict in as to who supposedly set the threshold for honor rounds. It says the legislature. So, uh, given that, that too, the caucus, I think, uh, will be missing the power. So, I think, uh, we need to do that at the level, uh, of the legislature, uh, probably, to a destination, maybe, or so, they will leave it with the caucus.
The comparison to the, so, Honorable Anthony Williams.
Thank you, so dear Honorable. I want to, I agree with our eleven colleagues, Honorable Richard Nawe Koon, but there are few issues I want to bring to his attention. Uh, some of the issue superintendent have been appointed, uh, they were appointed without the access of someone, the law, the custom, other county, uh, district. While it is true, it is the prerogative of the president to do the appointment, but it is important that every lawman
Honorable, Honorable Speaker, Co-Presiding, and fellow colleagues, go back to the general, general, Honorable General. And it's not mentioned, there is no prescription for the, for the communication. I'm talking about the council party, the, the, the county council that was established by the Beryl Ministry, and more over the caucus. So, my, my review motion is now referring to any of the superintendent.
Thank you. I go back and I remain on my position. Anything to bring county councils, you know that it pulls us around, they see superintendent, so I'm saying, let it allow the executive branch to do their work, and then, by leaving you know business. And, and then we, as all of us, we need to do the enemy, as, I don't want us to get involved. Let, let, let us remain as elites, and allow them to do what is supposed to do in the executive level, if there's any problem, then we not have to after the work of the councils, to be able to see the mistakes, then, so I will be right with you, then, that's what I have.
Thank you, uh, Honorable, the speaker, I, 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 the speaker. Uh, in the wisdom, I've got, I've got, I've got. Uh, so, what we see in the law, with the chapter, they were very careful. The county councils don't need every time. They need based on what they have in the job at a particular times. I know, Honorable Koo, want us to send a standard, but coming up with, uh, benefits or salary for these people, if you can't enough ready on the, maybe, the county, in fact, some of the county don't even have money like the other people. So, that's why the law said, they should come up with compensation for them, based on their work. So, I think it's good that we all look at it carefully.
The law is clear. It says the legislature should set the threshold. So, what this communication should be looking at, for the candidates, the honor rounds. That, check the law, two point, two, two point nine is there. And let's, then the one that's supposed to set the threshold.
Pressure for what?
Pressure for the part, the remuneration?
Yes, the remuneration.
So, isn't every county has a caucus? They need the county.
The people may think of county.
The county's a.
Let's give them a.
The county's a.
We allocate it.
We propose, or suggest, on the remuneration.
Yes.
Well, my, my understanding, my understanding of that communication is.
My understanding is what the law say.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we. We, as a deputy speaker, and say. And those who pass the law, somebody has stayed the force, has said a camp, and has. The legislature set the threshold. So, in the setting, they will set the threshold. We, uh, uh, law, they go, need to set a threshold. If you say, if people look to the council, is to get five hundred dollars for every city, we do that. As, as, as a, as a maximum, we do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleague, I know, I know, what is unique, for example, the most allowed, they have a given, to create a company. So, set a ceiling to have, in the form of the subject matter, I don't know the problem of this conversation, because.
That's the thing, Honorable Deputy Speaker, I, I, the, my colleagues, for the information, they need pass the law. And it's important that we go and read the law and prepare for our own setting. To get set grant group on local council, when you don't know the resource, they come and say, you setting on particular salary for the county council. It would not be fair for them. That is why the law said, please, what you have, as the setting, the caucus was inside yourself. Based on this allocation, the people are there, and the money we have, we will compensate them for this. That is why I'm giving.
Okay, take point, take point, and I used to go.
I have folks who, this is why we let you come to the end of the live broadcast. If you have any team members to help, don't join us another time, when they, uh, they, everything, they'll come back, they may miss, please, come by and.